All right, we'll call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Jake, roll call please.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCollum.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Oh.
Oh, sorry, hang on.
Nope, technical.
Sorry, didn't mean to. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, can we repeat that?
Absolutely.
For the good of the order.
Yep.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCollum.
Here.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to approve this morning's agenda.
Make motion, we approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
All right. Jake, any communications received by your office?
No, sir.
Very good, thank you. Public comments? A portion of our agenda for the public to speak on items not contained in this morning's agenda. Board cannot act on those items. They could be topics for future BOS meetings. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Jake.
Uh, Johnner.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. On to business, we have Resolution 2020-55, which is group stop sign locations at certain railroad crossings. So Tyler, I see that's yours?
Yes.
So what we got here?
So, since I've been county engineer, we've had duplicate signage. So the railroad by default puts up a yield sign at every railroad crossing. And on the cross buck, and it's up to the highway authority to determine through engineering study whether a stop sign is necessary. If so, then they'll put, then the highway authority is authorized to put up a stop sign. Which my predecessor had done. The problem was the railroad had never taken down the yields. So we had duplicate signings or conflicting signings. We had both stops and yields present at the same crossing. So since 2016, I have been emailing back and forth and multiple phone conversations with the railroad trying to get this resolved. And I believe we now have a cooperative railmaster that will be taking down the yields. And at the same time, we realized we did not have a resolution making the regulatory signage enforceable. Uh, so we did a second engineering study just to verify that nothing had changed, no more brush had been cleared, or nothing had changed along the rail. Um, and indeed it hadn't at these locations. So a stop sign is justified through the engineering study. And so we're asking for a resolution for these regulatory signs to be enforceable, which we have come both verbal and email confirmation that the railroad will take down the yields signs.
And the resolution is only for the routes indicated?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, most of which are on BNSF railroad. A couple, I believe, are Union Pacific.
Okay, very good. Thank you Tyler. Any discussion? Steve, Keisha.
Tyler, do you see, once the signs go up, then do you see them coming back through? I mean, within?
The stop signs are up currently.
Oh, they are up currently, okay.
We've had conflicting signs.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Five to seven years here.
But they, okay.
Yeah, this has been a long time coming, and I'm glad we're clearing all that up.
Yes, so we will stay after the railroad to make sure the yields come down.
Okay.
Thank you Tyler. Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion on Resolution 2020-55.
Make motion, we approve Resolution 2020-55.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you Tyler. Appreciate it. Next, we have a zoning question, site plan review, Rob and Wendy Sims.
Yes.
Missy, is that?
Mark, I'm here.
Okay, Missy, take it away.
So yeah, this is a, an existing building at 1052 218th Avenue, was built as a, an indoor horse arena. To string it, it became aware that they were going to, they no longer train horses, they wanted to put in an indoor archery range. Under Marion County ordinance, indoor archery range falls under 55.242, which is a special use permit for recreation type uses, gun clubs, skeet shooting, and other similar uses. That special use permit was granted on 7/21/2020 by the Board of Adjustments. The zoning commission then reviewed the site plan in accordance with 55.3. The special use permit requires that they go through cycling and review if it's anything other than one and two family residential or agricultural uses. They approved the site plan, and it's now coming before you. So with that being said, the entire archery range will be held within the confines of the building. It's a 30 by 200 area that they're going to, they have lined, double lined with heavy wood and rubber matting. There's three archery range, or three lanes in the archery range that would allow four or three people at a time to shoot per lane. So with the, everything else is within conformance. I mean, there's plenty of parking. Like one time this was used for an indoor arena, so they have plenty of parking. There's 26 spots alone alongside the building. The county engineer's office was out, gave approval of the driveway, the existing driveway. Marion County Environmental Health has given the go-ahead on the current septic system for this use. There are two paved ADA parking spots. There is a night watchman apartment within the building, and there will be 24-hour surveillance cameras. This building currently sits in the middle of a 40-acre tract. So the, the closest neighbor is a house that is actually owned by the Sims. It's about 400 feet away. Otherwise, the nearest non-property, you know, non-owner residence is about 1,300 feet away. So I guess the other thing to cover is the Total Outdoorsmen are leasing this property from, from Wendy Sims. The hours that they would be holding like weekend events would be 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that's not every weekend. They do a lot, they're a Christian-based organization with kids after school. Those events would be 3:30 to 9:00 p.m. The one thing that I will let you know that any members that, and members are basically what support this, the Total Outdoorsmen, they do have 24/7 access to go, you know, practice by key code. And so I, I would say that this is similar to what an anytime fitness or something would be. The, the members can go practice. The reason that they're looking at doing this is they have a lot of night shift people that when they get off work at 2:00 a.m., that is their daytime, and they want the ability to go practice. Had discussion with Rob, and the members are aware that if for some reason, and this was part of the, the special use permit resolution, for some reason that this 24/7 does not work, that's something that would have to be revisited by Board of Adjustments. Otherwise, fairly simple. There's, the rest of the building is occupied as personal storage for the Sims right now, so.
Right, very good. Thank you, Missy. Discussion? Jeff, is I get a question?
What was the address? Missy, what was, what was the address on that?
It's 1052 218th, but it's on a parcel with 1050 218th. There's two addresses on one parcel.
Okay, just for clarity, it's listed as 215th on the agenda?
Yeah. On the agenda, it says 215th. But it is 218th, right, Missy?
Yeah, but it's 218th.
Okay, and just, and just for my information, is it archery range only, inside archery range, or will be no, no outside shooting activities?
Indoor archery range only. Um, it's to be any to, any type of, and they're aware if there's to be any type of proposal for any uses outdoors, that they'll have to come back through the Board of Adjustments, you know, to expand their special use permit. So, I mean, obviously, special use permits, kind of an extra step of review for, for uses that are allowed within the A1 zoning, but they go through that extra step of review. So they're aware if they do anything outdoors, that they'll need to come back through the process.
Okay, thank you, Missy.
Thank you. Good question, Steve.
Yep.
So the actual address is 218th?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Correct.
So we need a motion to amend this agenda item to 218 Avenue, not 215, just so it's official?
So moved.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Did I catch Jeff? Very good. Is there any additional discussion on item two as amended?
No, I don't have anything.
Keisha, nothing? Steve?
Nope.
Okay, nothing from me. Missy, thank you for the explanation. Would entertain a motion to approve the site plan as amended.
Make motion, we approve the site plan as amended.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thanks, Missy.
Thank you.
Item number three is project change order number 004.
Chris.
So this is in regards to the old GIS office at the courthouse, northeast side of the building. Currently, to access that office space, you walk back into a hallway and then make a left-hand turn to go into that building. This, this basically takes the old safe out of there, which was a built-in safe. It's not structural, and it's not actually structural to the building. It's just block that's been put up, kind of an old safe room roughly eight by eight. That removes that and then removes the door from the hallway, and then moves it out to the actual main concourse. So that office space would then be equal space to where Veteran Affairs is at right now. When you look at Mike Coon's office, it'll be an identical office to that with a doorway facing the main concourse on the north side of the building. Um, it gives us good square footage that we can use. Right now, currently, that old safe room is pretty much just a catch-all for junk, pretty much. It'd be nice to get that door moved out there, and I think it, it's a lot more visible for the public depending, you know, who occupies that space going forward, so.
Excellent.
Hey, I would like to note, I, I brought that up. I asked Chris to check into that, so it was kind of my, it was my impetus to check that out so we can make a better workflow.
Yeah.
On the first floor.
Great idea.
Appreciate Chris doing that. I think it'll work a lot better for everybody, whoever occupies that room.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, some of the, I mean, the way the courthouse was designed originally, it's nice to be able to take some of these spaces and make them usable instead of just, just, uh, storage or junk space like they have been in the past. So that's excellent. Thank you, Steve, Chris, for working on that. Any discussion on that? Chris, as far as total amount, uh, we had originally thought 200,000. Are we still in that ballpark?
We're still in that ballpark right now. As you can see, this is change order number four. There are a few upcoming things that we'll have to discuss in future board meetings, but I still think within our 10% contingency that we placed on the project, we're gonna be either at that number or maybe just a little exceeding that number.
Okay, very good.
But we're going to get a very workable building.
We're gonna have an extremely workable building when it's all said and done.
Great. Excited to see that. Very good. Thank you for that. If there's no further discussion, would entertain a motion on this change order request.
Make motion, we approve change order number 004.
Second.
Jake.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Chris, thank you. Okay, next couple items are things I'm bringing to the board. First item is discussion around, potential action on the appointment of a public information officer. And my suggested designate is Emily Figgins, who, did I say that right? Figgins or Fagin?
Fagin.
I, I'll make sure I say that again, for the record. Okay. So the point of requesting a PIO appointment is, first of all, not to limit media access to elected officials or anybody else in Marion County. That's not what this is for. As a result of COVID, and some of the other things that have gone on over the past several months, it has been my contention that we need a place to organize information, actions that come from the Board of Supervisors, and ensure that the public is getting that information. Ensure that, that the things that we're doing that may not have necessarily be reported in the local media, that we're able to have a vehicle to get that out, and also to receive feedback in an organized way. So I think it is incumbent upon us, and this is a position that several other counties have in place, and it's predominantly through the EMA offices. Is that correct, Jeff, in my statement?
Paramount.
So, so I think it's a good position to establish, to organize and communicate information, and make sure that what we are doing gets out. I get so many comments, and this isn't a criticism of anybody, but people don't know what's going on. People don't have awareness. And although I feel our media has done a great, a great job, I feel we've done as a board everything we can apart from, you know, walking around on the street corner and passing out flyers, I think some processes can change that will make us better. And I think having someone that we can rely on to organize that information, get that information out, make sure we're getting information back that we need to know, is a good forward-looking step to take our government structure from the 20th century into the 21st. You'll see that here in the next item as well. Uh, you'll see that with what we're proposing to do with IT moving forward. But we need, we need to, we need to change our processes around information, and I think this is gonna be a good step to do that. And Emily is someone I'm suggesting because she did such a wonderful job picking up the COVID. She basically tells me what to do, and I just do it, and she gets everything organized, does a phenomenal job with that. Great addition to our staff. So that's my pitch. Discussion. And Emily, you can't back out now.
So will she gather then, information then, like, let's say if we have, when you do your information, you know, live feeds through Facebook, is that same situation?
Same situation, yeah.
She won't be the face though? You would like, as the chairman, be continued?
Well, I, I, I will still be the face of that, and there will be opportunities for everybody to be involved.
That wasn't my point. I was just, so. I was thinking maybe, I was thinking maybe she was.
That's good. That's good, Keisha. That's a good lead. Uh, as you know, we're developing our own YouTube channel. Emily is working with Andrew, our IT person, to do that so that we can get information to the public, even have more outlets for that.
Okay.
Um, I anticipate having regular sessions with various elected officials who don't normally get FaceTime so that people can know what's going on in their respective worlds. We, we get, we get a lot of the press because of these meetings, but we have other elected officials who get zero press. And they should get more inform, and on top of that, the public should know what these jobs do. They vote for them, right? So, so I think that's gonna be important for the future, so people understand what's going on within all of Marion County government, not just the Board of Supervisors, because we have a lot of things going on. Good stuff for our public. People are working hard and doing everything they can. So, so it's another outlet for that, Keisha. And Emily, I'm confident will do a wonderful job putting that together for us.
Mark, question for you. Sheriff saying, oh, here, can he see me or hear me?
I can hear you, I cannot see you.
There he is.
Oh, are you there?
Just moved, yep.
And I'm assuming this is just for the Board of Supervisors? I mean, if elected officials still wanna have or be their PIO for their office, that's still the case, correct?
That's, that's what I said at the beginning, Jason.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that part of it. I, I just wanna make sure whatever on that side of it.
Mark, this is Ed. Am I correct that then future Freedom of Information Act requests should go through this person?
Yeah.
If there's a person who's gonna be combining information?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a good place to start, Ed, yeah, just to have someone to collate.
Okay.
Of course, your office will still be heavily involved, but you don't have to collate it now.
No, sounds great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Good questions? Yeah, and again, to reiterate, it's not to restrict anybody's access to anything, and we, you know, this is for us. And it's for information relative to all of the actions of Marion County government that we have responsibility for. The budget, operational process, those things, and again, opportunities for other officials, elected and non, to have some screen time, let the public know what's going on. I think that's good. The goal is to increase transparency. That's the goal.
Good. I appreciate you stating that.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Steve?
Nope. Sounds good to me.
All right. Well, I would entertain a motion to then approve Emily as the Marion County Public Information Officer.
Do you wanna just approve the, the new office, or?
The appointment.
Okay.
I make motion, we approve the appointment of the Public Information Officer, Emily Figgins.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Very good. Second item I'm gonna bring to the board's attention, and you all have copies of the agreement. It's another thing I've been stewing on for quite some time, and it was heightened because of COVID and some of the issues around state funding, state actions, federal actions. I think we need lobbyists for Marion County, specifically to deal with Marion County issues. Had some conver, conversations on this with some various folks, and Kelly Berwors Myers was brought to my attention as someone who is well-versed in lobbying. She is a lobbyist right now. Kelly is here with us in the room today and has recently signed on with a new law firm. And Kelly, maybe just a little background on the law firm you're going to, and?
Yes, the law firm is Skinner and Pashke. Troy Skinner and Kelly Pashke are the principals of that law firm. They do a lot of lobbying work. They're adding two additional attorneys, myself included as one of those. Like I said, they do, they have a number of clients. They also do employment law and some real estate law as well. Basically, off-session, but they have a large lobby client base.
Okay, very good, thank you. I think it's, as you can see in the, you can see the agreement in front of you, and, but from my perspective, the issues facing our county, particularly the state mandates that come, I am not convinced that we are being well-served through the consolidated voices that we currently use, i.e. ISAC. It's not that they do a terrible job, but I think there are things here in Marion County we would like people to be more proactive on. We would like people to have more of what we feel are our specific county interests in mind instead of the collective of the, all of the counties that ISAC represents. I think there are things that we believe as a board and that we think are best for our citizens from tax reform and expense reduction at the state level, and those things that we need more, a more consistent, more consistent help at the State House. Someone who can meet with our legislative, our state legislators on a regular basis, who knows the process that we don't know and aren't able to engage in on a daily basis. Throughout my time on the board, people have asked me, should I be more concerned about what goes on in Washington or what goes on in Des Moines? And I have consistently said this, and I still believe this, we have to be more concerned with what goes on in Des Moines. Because the mandates, the laws, the regulations that are passed that come back to us are things that hit our budget. They change our processes. They impact our residents immediately. And we need someone up there to help us see what's important, what's coming, and have some ability to respond in a way that is respectful of the process. Kelly knows the process extremely well. I have warned her that where I tend to be a hammer, she can be the velvet glove. And that's a good thing, right? So, so anyway, I think it's important. I think it moves our processes into the 21st century. It takes us to a place where we stand on our own. We have our own voice. It's certainly not saying that other offices, I know you're involved in ISAC, I know people go to ISAC meetings, doesn't, doesn't take that off the table, still do that, be a part of your associations, but from a board perspective, we need our own voice. And we need someone that represents the things that we as a board are considering important for Marion County. We can have debate on those things and discussion, but I think this is a critical time for us. I think Kelly will be a good representative, so that's why I'm supporting her as our lobbyist and requesting approval of this agreement.
Just to be clear, that ISAC will still be representing all our other departments?
Yeah, we're not taking away ISAC, okay.
I, I know you said that. I just wanna be clear that everybody understands that.
It's $5,000 a year. Again, I don't think we get anything out of it, but that's all right. But that's my opinion. Yeah, Tyler?
If we have a commonality between Marion County and what our affiliates are doing, how do we ensure that the message is being conveyed the same through our affiliate lobbyists and, and Marion County's?
Well, I think first, if there is an issue, let's say for county engineers, okay? And there is commonality, I think then that's a good time for you to get ahold of our public information person and say, we need to communicate this up to Kelly.
Correct.
Make sure that's a position we want to advance. Yes?
I would also say that I know Jamie Cashman and very well from ISAC. I've worked closely with Jamie and Lucas on other issues that impact counties. I would, it will be something where I will work closely to gauge how, you know, where ISAC is going with things, but be at the table so that Marion County can have their own independent voice. So on some of these things, absolutely, get ahold of Emily. She can contact me, communicate with me. But I'll also be working in tandem with ISAC.
So in the past, you know, I've sent you guys information or emails encouraging you to reach out to our representatives, as I am, and to make sure we're all informed and pulling in the same direction.
Yeah.
Now that would go through Emily copying you guys?
Sure, absolutely.
That's how, that's how I agree to it.
Again, again, more, more ways of getting our information, the things that we want pushed at the state level to our representatives, and having somebody there who knows the process, who can advocate for us on a daily basis. We can't do that.
I think it'd be very helpful, like, like we're in, if you're in a region, be better to have that representative rather than ISAC that's not really representing a region. Our own lobbyists would be representing a region we're in for having specific problems within that region.
Absolutely. I raised this in one of our economic development calls and talked to Mayor DeWort and talked to Knoxville and said, we're headed this direction, and I think there was general excitement about that. Because there are issues when you look not just at Marion County government, but also for our, our other municipalities that, you know, they're unique to us, and we need to make sure that we're staying on top of those issues. Mental health is a great example. I mean, we're, we're in a mental health region that we're funding in. We're funding almost 40% of it. I think that's close, right, Rachel? She gave me the thumbs up. So if our taxpayers are having to do that, we need to have somebody there talking to our legislators about the things that concern us for the money that our taxpayers are extending. And that is such a confused mess anyway. We need to have somebody communicating back to us on a consistent, regular basis on what's really going on. And frankly, the voices that have been coming back from other sources, it's been just as confused. So there are, there are example after example after example of state mandates that impact us that we need to say, wait a minute, what about this? What about this? What about this?
Hey, Mark, this is Ed. I guess I have a question for Kelly since I haven't seen her contract. Kelly, can we talk a little bit about conflict? Kelly, can we talk a little bit about conflict? Since you represent the County Attorneys Association, I'm an elected board member of that association. What, what occurs under the contract if we differ? The county and the County Attorneys Association, who has primary, who do you represent primarily in the event of a conflict?
That, well, the contract that says that we will not proceed if there's a con, a conflict, that's something that both clients, we would have to discuss. We have both clients and make that, and divulge that conflict. I mean, we're ethically bound as attorneys to do that.
So I know that the County Attorneys Association every year gets together, we vote on our legislative priorities. And then you act on our legislative priorities. So in the event that, God forbid, there was ever a conflict with that, you would disclose to both and then make a decision? I just wanna understand if, if Mark has a particular idea that he wants to advance, that may deal with funding, that may disagree with collections or sheriff's reimbursement rates, those type of things, how we, how we deal with that issue?
Um, well, I think.
Good stuff happens so quick at the legislature. You know, there's no way to know one day from another. That's why I think you always ask the County Attorneys Association to come up with our legislative priorities in September and us work through those issues moving forward. Because I, I mean, honestly, wasn't there some conflict between you and the Sheriff's Association or the potential issues and that's why you and Susan split?
No, that's not the reason why Susan and I split.
Okay.
There was one issue, um, it was not a county attorney priority and it was about, um, professional permits to carry. One assistant Polk County Attorney wanted to, um, make a professional permit to carry for prosecutors. And the Sheriff's Association was not, and they did, they wanted to make sure that there was education involved in that. The same level of education that law enforcement gets to get a professional permit to carry. So it ended up not being a conflict, but there was concern on the front side. Both parties were made aware of that. The bill ended up dying in the House anyway, did not proceed.
And I guess I'll answer, I'll answer part of it this way, guys. I, I think disclosure of those conflicts is important if they come, but as far as your associations go, if they're at conflict for what we deem as elected officials as the best interest of Marion County residents, we need to have that discussion because we also represent them too. Your associations are for your associations, um, and for their betterment of that process, uh, and the things that you do. So we can have those discussions.
Oh, sorry, Mark, but to your point there, we just, whether the association's a part of it or not, I'm not worried about that. But even, even as elected officials, if, I mean, Ed and you as two elected officials in Marion County have a, a different opinion on that. What I'm worried about is, is to Steve said, that the lobbyists will represent the Board of Supervisors and ISAC will still represent department heads? I'm worried about that conflict. How, how does that, if, if you and Ed both as elected officials have a differing opinion on it? Is, is our lobbyist that's hired by Marion County only gonna take your side?
Well, we deal with budget, Jason. And most of the things that I'm talking about as far as state mandates deal with our budget.
Okay, if it's a budgetary type thing, then that's, I just don't want there to be conflict down the road in regards to two elected officials in regards to that.
I won't promise that. There's always potential for that. But the goal is so that we can deal with all of the various mandates. We spend millions of dollars on things we shouldn't. And right now, we don't have a good representative voice up there. Our representatives do a good job, but they get walled off into education or some other committee. And then they're not focused on the things that we're focused on or that we see flow through our budget or we see flow through your budgets. And we're responsible for those tax dollars. It's extraordinarily frustrating to me that we get walled off that way. And we need to open that.
I, I agree with that. I'm just trying to figure out the way that we, we as elected officials, I mean, aren't going against each other because we all represent thirty-three thousand people. So as long as there's no issues or conflicts in regards to that, that's what I, I guess I'm looking for.
Yeah, well, I, and I'm not gonna promise that. As elected officials, we all have differing opinions. We're supposed to be all Republicans, but that varies. Right? Everybody's got a different view of what that means. And what we value. So unless you can tell me that we're gonna align one hundred percent on all our current issues, which we do not, how would we do that going forward?
That's the concern.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make that promise, Jason. We're gonna do our best to make sure we're in alignment, but the things that flow through our budget, the things that flow through our budget are what I'm concerned about. And that's what we're doing this for.
So, so you're saying only budgetary things? I'm, I'm good with that.
Good, I'm glad. Anything else? Any other discussion, board? Steve?
When the, the services that you're rendering, is that only during the legislative session or is this kind of like a ongoing thing? If something comes up, even if the legislature is not in session?
Well, so the first, the first quarter before session starts, which session starts about usually the second week of January or so. Ed talked about working with the County Attorneys Association. We meet, we, uh, talk about our different legislative priorities that we would like to, and then we start talking to, uh, champions, lawmakers that would, um, help us advance our priorities, uh, start going to different events where the lawmakers will be, we'll talk about our priorities with them. Um, then during the legislative session, of course, that runs usually through the end of April, sometimes May, we even ended up going into June before as well. Um, we monitor legislation that would impact the county. And, um, we would advance whatever legislative priorities the board would identify. And then often there's interim committees as well over the summer and fall for the next year, depending on, um, how those are assigned during the legislative session. But it's typical that you would break up a contract over an entire year period.
Questions, Steve? Anything else?
What's the term on the contract or is there a term?
We'll put a year in there. It's, it's annually renewed time. So if anything, you think of this as kind of a test case for us, to see how this works out for a year. There will be things we have to iron out as to how this would work. But to not do it puts us, I think, at a terrible competitive disadvantage. Because we look what's happened already, whether it's mental health reform, whether it's things, I mean, all of the things from a funding standpoint that we get handed to us and say, oh, by, by the way, county, just deal with it. Figure out another way to finance this. That's not, that's not good process either. It's not that Kelly's gonna win all these arguments for us, but at least we're gonna have somebody there advocating for us on a daily basis. Reminding our legislators what our views are. That's important. So while they're on their different committees and getting walled off, they stay engaged on the things that we care about. They have their own agendas. Everybody runs on their own agendas. So they need to remember what ours are as well and what, what we think is good for our residents.
I, I am comfortable, I mean, I like that paragraph number eight, that there is no competing representation clause in this contract.
Any other questions?
I would think that as adults, we would all get together for whatever is the best for Marion County. If we ever do get into a situation like that, I would hope that we could all come together and agree that we do what's best.
And, and, and that's, that's right, Stephen. And you run on a particular philosophy, right? As Republicans, we have certain views about things. That's what we run on. And we, and we run as part of that philosophical position. Again, there's a lot of variance there. But that should be the point of, that should be the start of the agreement.
I, I run on what I think's right or wrong, whether it's Republican or whatever. I just do what I think's right.
Well, good. That's good for you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Well, with that, since I put it forward, I would entertain a motion on this.
I move that we, uh, proceed with hiring a lobbyist on behalf of Marion County.
I'll second it.
Combs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Abstain.
Very good. Thank you. Updates. Steve?
No, I think we covered that with Chris earlier.
Okay, good, good. Keisha?
Yeah, um, our workforce development is continuing to, uh, proceed. We're doing, getting all the, we got the twenty-eighties all done, so looks like, uh, come to September first, we have met that down line. So doing well there, um, planning and zoning, met last night. Always development in Pella, so it's, uh, meeting there, but other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Nothing from my perspective. So with that, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye, very good. Thank you. We are adjourned.